All right, I called the January 7th, 2020 Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45 PM. Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I would make a motion for the consideration of claims to be paid, consideration of bills to be paid in the amount of $541,114.68, manual checks in the amount of $1,697.91, payroll and liabilities for 12/20 of 2019, and the amount to $455,840.26, for a total of $998,602.85.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. I guess in terms of discussion, we added a claim 31213 for a sanitation truck. Got an email about this just earlier, and the amount of $296,916, even. And as I, I mean, we budgeted for this. This is planned expense.
Your Honor, we did.
So, just the timing was a little bit different than we were thinking when the report went out. Any other questions or comments on the bills?
I did want to note, I noticed that we had a couple more grants we had paid out. I believe Injury Prevention Resources was one of those. So I did see some more of those come out this time, so hopefully they're getting put to good use, so.
And that's the second of the fiscal year or the third? I'm trying to...
Your Honor, that's the third distribution. I believe there's nine separate agencies that we're distributing funds to on a quarterly basis.
All right, now that money's going to very good use in the city of Riverton with a lot of different agencies, so.
Yeah.
Agencies, groups.
Agents.
All right, any other discussion?
No, sir.
Your Honor.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion passes. Any other business?
We have nothing, Your Honor.
None, Your Honor.
Okay, adjourn at 6:47 then.
Councilman Bailey will lead us in that, and I will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear, kind, heavenly Father, we're grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy. We're grateful for the opportunity to work for the city and to help the people of Riverton. We ask you to be with us this evening, and as we make the decisions that we make, that we might have thy influence. We're grateful for this location. Tonight, we ask a special blessing to be with the armed forces that are deployed, that they might have thy care and watchful eye. We're grateful for the work that they do, grateful for this land that we live in, for the freedoms that we enjoy, and for the opportunities to do the things we choose. We're grateful for thy Spirit and for thy influence in our lives. We recognize thy hand in all things. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct oral call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
The Chair, I declare a quorum as present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the, from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item which is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any other may speak now. I would ask that those individuals who speak, who wish to address the council at this time, to approach the podium, identify yourself for the record. Please run.
Good evening, Mayor Gard and council members and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ron Howard, and I am here representing the Riverton Peace Mission. And for those of you who aren't familiar with the Riverton Peace Mission, it's an organization that was started by Chesee Lee and I in an effort to improve race relations here in this community and on the reservation. The reason I'm here is because I wanted to announce an event that we are planning on January 18th, and I brought some flyers that I would like to hand out. The topic of discussion is, well, as Chesee puts it, hurts in divisions within Fremont County and on the Wind River Reservation. So the plan is to, it's at Central Wyoming College, at the Intertribal Building, from 10:00 AM until 1:30 PM, and it's open to the public. Lunch will be provided, and childcare will also be provided, which is kind of rare. But I think that will help parents come and participate. I would appreciate a representative from City Council and from the Police Department to come. I know that's kind of a long time, so if you can't stay for the whole time, you know, I mean, that's understandable. But the plan is to have, ask some questions of the public, and there will be moderators there to kind of keep it on a constructive track, and then a roundtable discussion to just come up with solutions to some of the issues that we are facing in this city and on the reservation. So with that, I would like to just, I have about a dozen copies here, if I can hand them to someone.
Please do.
I'm sorry.
Ron, is that a Sunday, 18th? Is 18th a Sunday or a Saturday?
It's a Saturday.
Super.
Yeah, and it's sort of in commemoration of the Martin Luther King Day march that's coming up on Monday. So are there any other questions?
Appreciate your efforts. We do appreciate your efforts.
Well, thank you very much. And with that, I wish I could stay for the whole meeting, but I've got kids to bathe, and I got to get them ready for bed, so.
Mayor, if I may, do you have a Facebook page or anything, or somewhere you can be live for those who maybe aren't in attendance, that they could view it as well?
There is a website there.
ThisRivertonPeaceMission.org?
Right.
Okay, and they'll be able to view it possibly from there, or?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still sort of planning that, so I'm hoping that we can stream it.
Perfect, thank you.
So, anything else? Well, Happy New Year, everybody, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ron, appreciate it. Anybody else? Would the city clerk please read consent agenda, consent agenda items only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes December 17th, 2019, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes January 7th, 2020, Finance Committee meeting, approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for January 7th, 2020, and approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of December 2019.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee are for bills to be paid in the amount of $541,114.68, manual check in the amount of $1,697.91, payroll liabilities for December 20th, 2019, in the amount of $455,840.26, for a total of $998,652.85. And this reflects, I guess, change from what was originally distributed, adding a Peterbilt of Wyoming claim for a sanitation truck.
And I read this, and I actually understand, we bought the whole truck. Fantastic. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz, a second by Councilman Bailey. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Council leadership ballot, City Council President and Vice President, City Administrator, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the beginning of each year, council votes in a new president and vice president. The council president presides in the absence of the mayor, the vice president presides if both of them are gone. The process by which we're, that this is usually done is that myself and the chief will take your ballots first for council president, take them back, count them, bring them right back to you, tell you who has been elected, and then you'll do the same for vice president. Each member, sorry, typically council presidents sit to the right of the mayor, and council vice presidents sit to the left of the mayor, however, if that is not required. If there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer, but at this point, we recommend you undertake the process.
Thank you. I suppose we should all vote and pass them in.
No cheating?
Just the president, this time.
Didn't take the fun out of it.
Both, did you?
No.
Want to make sure we're all on the same page here?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Mike Bailey is selected as council president.
Thank you. Would everyone vote for vice president?
Everybody being so quiet makes it seem much more tense.
We could tell jokes or something while they're out. I could tell you about the football game. It was awfully fun.
Oh, man.
You went down to it?
I bet it was.
It was fun. Couldn't believe how many Wyoming fans were there. The coach even said, "We better send the National Guard out to see if anybody's still at home." Turn out the lights and shut the gate. Yeah, it was fun. The first possession, I thought we were in real trouble. They took it right down, stuck it in the end zone, and I thought, ooh, this could be a long game.
Your Honor, Rebecca Schatz is selected as vice chair, as vice.
Thank you.
City count, or the City Council Committee appointments, City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, in January of each a year, the Mary Point City Council members to the boards and committees. These committees are as follows this year: Airport Board, Chamber of Commerce, Finance, Force 1% Committee, Fremont County Solid Waste Board, Community Engagement Committee, Solutions Committee. The senior center endowment will be, would be by the chairman of the Finance Committee. So once those are, if those are approved, then whoever they elect their chair becomes the chairman of the Finance Committee. I'm sorry, it becomes a representative to the senior center endowment. A representative to the county commissioners, to the Fremont County School District 25 Rec. Board, Fremont County Association of Governments, Leadership Council with Volunteers of America, PAWS, as well as tribal representatives. At this point, the appointments have been, the mayor shows in their appointments, and approval is recommended.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the mayor, mayor's council committee appointments.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion, and Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Appointment of the municipal court judge, alternate judge, and city attorney. City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Pursuant to statutory requirements, the governing body may make appointments annually to the positions of municipal judge, alternate judge, and city attorney. These appointments and the parameters of their compensation are denoted within the staff report. These have not changed since last year, so none of the, there is not a budgetary impact comparatively. Those numbers do change based on usage for, such as our city attorney, some years more, some years less. However, the rate has not changed. Currently, it is proposed that the municipal judge be Teresa McKee, that Aaron Vincent be the alternate judge, and that Rick Solers be the city attorney. Council, staff does recommend all of these appointments as well. We stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointments for the municipal court judge, the alternate judge, and the city attorney.
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion, and Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Any discussion?
Your Honor?
Tim.
In the event that we need to have prosecutor when we have, well, I guess we don't usually appoint a city prosecutor. The city attorney has just acted in that function, and that's been a contract for services sort of thing, so.
Don't we use Jane to do that?
She, Your Honor, she is the public defender. Rick Solers acts as the prosecutor.
Okay.
I think we're good, Your Honor.
That work. I'd like to just say thanks to those individuals. They have worked with me this year and been extremely easy to work with, and I appreciate their, their help and push forward. I appreciate that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Resolution number 1405, the designation of official depository, financial director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you, as resolution number 1405, designating official depositories for account transactions for city funds. Also, Wyoming state statute does require that municipalities designate official depositories to hold our funds, and it is required that we receive approval by the governing body, by each financial institution. The resolution addresses applications received from financial institutions requesting to be named a depository. They are required to provide us a certified resolution by their board of directors, as well as a copy of their financial report. We have received filed applications from Central Bank and Trust, First Interstate Bank, US Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and Wyoming Community Bank. At this time, staff does recommend that the council approve resolution number 1405.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1405.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Rota has the motion, and Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Resolution number 1406, designation, designation of legal newspaper. City clerks, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution number 1406 is a resolution designating the official legal newspaper for the city of Riverton as required by state statute. This is something that has to be designated each year. The Riverton Ranger is the only printed periodical that has the basic standards required by statute to meet such designation. However, I'd like to point out that the city staff does strive to provide transparent and current information to the public, not only via the required means of publication, but also through the city's website and city-sponsored social media outlets. With the approval of resolution 1406, it will ensure that the city meets statutory requirements for the publication processes. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1406.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion, Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Any discussion? This is one of those items that we all wonder about, and I think the better we get at putting it out electronically, we're going to get better information to our, to the individuals in the city. And so we need to strive to do that. The paper is a good solution, too, and I would encourage those to follow that there. But if you don't get the paper, you need to pick that up on Facebook and those other locations. And all of our media outlets are doing a great job getting that out for us, so we appreciate it. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, one item, our website actually does allow for push notifications, so you can sign up for those, so we, it automatically sends you an alert when things are provided. And it's not just, and there's a number of things that you can get at, just as another option.
So a citizen would come in and, and work with the girls out front and tell them that they'd like push notices?
No, Your Honor, they can sign up directly from the website. They don't ever have to, they could do it from their phone if they want to.
Did I need a 13-year-old to show them how to do it?
I did, so.
We'll try to get some 13-year-olds. That'll work. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing and consideration of a retail liquor license transfer application from Bridget and James Bunker. City clerk, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and council before you tonight for your consideration is a retail liquor license transfer of ownership and transfer of location application submitted by Bridget and James Bunker, doing business as Bunk's Barbecue, to be located at 303 East Main Street as non-operational for the remainder of the 2019-2020 licensing year. The license is currently in Maverick's name as non-operational status. Transferring the license to a different ownership as non-operational will allow for one year for the new owners to return the license to operational status pursuant to state statutes and Riverton Municipal Code. Mr. and Mrs. Bunker are also in the audience tonight. Should you have any questions of them regarding their future business plan? The Wyoming Liquor Division has certified the application as complete. The proper fees have been paid, and proper notice to the public has been advertised. Therefore, based on the information provided through the application process, staff recommends approval of the transfer of ownership and transfer of location application as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Rota has the motion, Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourself for the record. Identify yourself for the record.
You guys, I'm Bridgette Bunker.
I'm James Bunker. And we're Bunk's Barbecue. She handles things a little better, so I'll let her do the talking.
So, the reason why we want to have it as parked and unoperational, we are currently looking for a restaurant location. The reason for going for a full retail liquor license versus a restaurant liquor license is we do a lot of catering. So, we have to have the retail liquor license in order to cater off-site. So, that is our reason for going for the full retail liquor license.
Fabulous. Any other questions?
And then, as soon as we do find a location, we will come back and ask you guys for approval to move it to that address.
The application had an address on Main and the 300 block?
303.
And it was only, you only got 13 feet of it or something?
Well, that's, my mom and her husband just purchased the old Brown Sugar Roastery building, and so they're working on opening up a bookstore there, but that's where we're.
Do you know which 13 feet you get?
I think it's 13 feet wide.
Perfect. We're glad to have you. Pick that up and put it to use. Wish you well. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, I move we close the public hearing.
Thank you. Councilman Hancock has the motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the retail liquor license transfer to, from owners and location from the Maverick Inc. to Bridgette and James Bunker doing business as Bunk's Barbecue.
So moved.
Councilwoman Schatz has the motion, and Councilwoman Borders has the second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of Ordinance Number 19-016, Second Reading, Finance Agreement for High Plains Power. Would the City Clerk please read the Ordinance Number 19-016 by title only? I have a question mark behind that. Is there any chance that you don't have to read that whole thing?
No, Your Honor, I do, according to statute.
You're up.
Proposed Ordinance Number 19-016 on Second Reading. An Ordinance granting to High Plains Power Incorporated, Wyoming Corporation, its successors and assigns a non-executive, or a non-exclusive right to, and franchise to construct, maintain, and operate along, across, and under the present and future streets, alleys, public places, and ways of the City of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, an electric light and power system for the purpose of supplying electricity and electric service to the City of Riverton, the inhabitants thereof, and others, subject to the terms and conditions and to the making of payments specified in the ordinance, and repealing enrolled Ordinance Number 5-004 of the City of Riverton, passed and adopted March 15, 2005.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 19-016 on Second Reading.
So moved.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. The second is Councilman Hancock. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration for Ordinance Number 19-015, Second Reading, Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 13.04, Public Billing Process for Public Services, 19-017, Second Reading, Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 3.08, Water Service, Water Service System, 19-018 on Second Reading of the Riverton Municipal, Chapter 3.2, Sewer Service System, 19-019 on Second Reading of the Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 8.12, Garbage Collection and Disposal. Would the City Clerk please read Ordinance Number 19-015, 19-017, 19-018, and 19-019 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-015 on Second Reading. An Ordinance Amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.04, Billing Procedure for Public Services, repealing Section 13.04.110, Base Charges for Services of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-017 on Second Reading. An Ordinance Amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.08, Water Service System, Section 13.08.440 Notice Requirements, and Section 13.08.450, When Due and Payable Late Charges of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-018 on Second Reading. An Ordinance Amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.20, Sewer Service System, Section 13.20.190, Fees Amount, Section 13.20.330, General Statement of Rate Structure, Section 13.20.360 Notice Requirements, and Section 13.20.370, When Due and Payable Late Charges of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-019 on Second Reading. An Ordinance Amending Title 8 Health and Safety to revise Chapter 8.12, Garbage Collection and Disposal, Section 8.12.290 Monthly Payment, and Section 8.12.300 Notification of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 19-015 on Second Reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Schatz, second by Councilman Rota. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Numbers 19-017 on Second Reading.
So moved.
Councilwoman Schatz has the motion and Councilman Hancock has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 19-018 on Second Reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 19-019 on Second Reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Hancock has the motion. Corey, give you a second. Councilman Rota has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Consideration of Real Estate Contract, City Administrators' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. In 2011, City conducted a process by which proposals were accepted for firms to market city property within the airport industrial park. Since that time, three lots have been sold. You had two lots in '12 and one lot in 2013. The contract associated with the services was renewed internally from '13 to '17, and it was brought back subsequently the last two years and had one-year extensions. Interest in the properties has been relatively limited. However, we have at different times worked with the service provider when people have looked at the different properties, and they have provided that service without, without any concern. It is, while it is recommended that City, that Council directs staff to seek proposals, this is not necessarily an indication of the performance of the existing firm. And we wanted to be clear on that. It is very common when we, when we look out, when we look to services and provide services, that we see new quotes, new bids, new proposals every, every so often. This tends to happen every three to five years. At this point, it's been approximately nine. There is nothing wrong with the service that we have received. I want to be clear about that. However, because it's a standard practice, we do recommend that we do proposals. However, you have before you a one-year extension for services that may be approved by Council. As such, we, again, we have had not, we have not had a problem with the existing services. They've been nothing but good to us. So, we appreciate their work and would have, answer any questions.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Contract Amendment Extension, extending the listing period to December 31, 2020.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Bailey and a second by Councilman Larson. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Ivan Judd is here, representing the Home Source Realty. I was wondering if he had anything that he would like to add to the development of selling those lots faster or something.
Ivan, would you, have us, inform us on what you think you know?
Your Honor, Council, my name's Ivan Judd. I'm with Home Source Realty. Thank you. In, I believe, 13, 2013, we did do some divisions of some larger lots, and that's when FedEx and Upright Construction bought those. I think, I think the lots are proportionate for what, you know, the market would support. I think it's an economic factor that they haven't, there hasn't been more activity. So, no. I don't know that there's anything that really that we could do to initiate sales at this time. Other than get some more activity in Riverton, that would help.
And, and we're trying that. But you know, the, the state is, some suggestions down at the legislature is to require cities to sell surplus property. And, and that's, it may not get the legs that they think it will, but, you know, maybe you ought to take a look at and run us some new market analysis and, and, you know, maybe we've got to lower the price a little bit to get, get them moving or change the size of lots or something. But, you know, you might give that some further thought with the idea that the state may mandate.
Certainly discuss that.
Appreciate that. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, how would they make us sell them if nobody wants to buy them? That's, I guess, my question.
Well, prices.
Unless you just give them away.
You might even look at it.
Make people sell, make people buy them.
Yeah, make people buy them, it'd be a better law.
We could, we could do that. We could make a law like that.
The price is subject to appraisal. The buyer actually sets the price for the purchase, suggests the price for purchase, and then it's up to Council to approve, subject to an appraisal. So, that's actually the process.
So, we could actually get some low bids?
Could get some, you could, you've seen offers lower than what, actually higher on lots that, it was actually an alley that was, that they requested to be vacated.
Right.
And that was denied. So, that was the last activity.
Can I just bring that up to give you some thought that, you know, there may be, there is a move underway, and I think there's more than just Riverton that have these lots that are, were designed to develop and are lagging in sales. So, anything you could do to, to give us some ideas there, we might entertain that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. By the way, that motion passed. Resolution Number 1407, 1408, 1409, Airport Improvement Program, AIP Grant Application. Public Works Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Each of these resolutions support capital improvement projects at the airport. As you are aware, we receive significant federal dollars and state dollars to make those improvements. They all tie back to the NIPIS program, which is run by the federal government, which states that we have to have a capital plan in order to receive federal airport improvement project monies. The state of Wyoming helps us with that capital plan through the Wyoming Capital Improvement Program, excuse me, Aviation Capital Improvement Program, or what we call the WASP. We have a running WASP that we update every year that looks out for the, at a minimum 10 years and out as far as 15 or 20. The projects before you have been on our WASP for some time, and the applications that you're considering, two are supported by federal and state grant, and one is a state-only grant. The two that are supported by federal and state funds come at a percentage of 93.75 from the federal government and 3.75 from the state government. The first of which is to purchase a backup generator for the airfield. Surprisingly enough, we don't have one to cover a lot of our airfield operations. When some of our expansions took place over 10 years ago, housing was made available for the placement of a generator, but the generator was not purchased. We now have funds available in our federal AIP entitlement monies to make that purchase. This will support any power outages that occur at the airfield, excuse me. It will allow us to support power during outages. Therefore, the lights on the airfield will, will be able to be operating, and then also the ARF building, the fire truck building, will have power so that we can exit any emergency equipment that is necessary. The second one that is federal and state paid, paid for is a design-only grant at this time. It's to rehabilitate taxiway A and C. This project will be one that is reconstructed probably in three years and will be over $4 million to do. So, this allows us to begin all processes necessary to receive the federal funds by a design standpoint and environmental standpoint. The third project is a state-only and local-only project at a 90-10 ratio. This is to procure a snow removal piece of equipment, a truck and a broom. The standard by which airports operate now is to run those brooms on a truck more than the plows. And during our recent certification inspection with the FAA, they said you shall purchase a broom and truck, and you better do it soon. So, the state worked with us. We were able to get it on the WASP, move it up, and fortunately, it is at that 90-10 ratio because it is safety-related. With that information, we recommend the City Council individually pass these resolutions so that we can submit these grants and hopefully receive word by spring so we can then commence these projects.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please read Resolution Number 1407, 1408, 1409 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Resolution Number 1407, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Riverton, supporting the application of Airport Improvement Program Grant Number 3-56-0024-046 from the Federal Aviation Administration, and ARI 006A from the Aeronautics Division of the Wyoming Department of Transportation. Resolution Number 1408, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Riverton, supporting the application of Airport Improvement Program Grant Number 3-56-0024-047 from the Federal Aviation Administration, and ARI 001B from the Aeronautics Division of the Wyoming Department of Transportation. Resolution Number 1409, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Riverton, supporting the application of ARI 003A from the Aeronautics Division of the Wyoming Department of Transportation.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for Resolution Number 1407.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution number fourteen zero eight.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution number fourteen zero nine.
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Councilwoman Schatz has the second. Any further discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Kyle, could you tell me what we're going to do with our current brand-new snow remover that we had to build a new building for? That was absolutely mandatory that we have that. Now we're going to get a fantastic brooming. What type of vehicle is five hundred thousand dollars for a brooming vehicle?
Your Honor, that is correct. It's a big broom. I'm happy to answer that question. Both those pieces of equipment will work in tandem. What has been discovered is brooms work very well when you have a light powdered snow that doesn't accumulate very deep. The plows don't address that very well. The brooms, however, move that light snow and then low accumulation of snow very quickly and efficiently. And it improves the braking action report that we have to provide pilots before they even consider coming to our airspace. So they will work in tandem and hopefully for each storm, we can use both of them. Now, why is it so expensive? It's, it's basically a dump truck with a large broom. So it's, it's a large, very expensive piece of equipment.
Do we have a, a, a storage for it?
Your Honor, yes, we do. We will utilize our orange hanger to store this.
So, so we don't have to modify or change or?
Put a bigger door on?
Put a bigger door or change the bottom because the brooms are extended or?
Your Honor, that is correct. Since we store all of our snow removal equipment in the orange hanger, we do have the space. And with the change from Denver Air Connection to SkyWest, we actually have more room because Denver Air Connection leased space in our orange hanger for their deice truck. That will no longer be there. So we have space. And to clarify, the door that had to be accommodated was in the air rescue firefighting building and it was for the new ARF truck.
Okay. Thank you.
The firefighting truck had a wider wheelbase, so it hadn't even been modeled. We talked with Ernie also about this on the radio. We spend a lot of money putting those stripes on the airport and the blades have a tendency to scrape up the paint. And so, the other idea is that it's highly reflective, paint and costly, so the brush would do less damage to those, if we can do it. So, that's why they've pushed us that direction and it is a push, so. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Council Committee Reports and Council Member Roundtable. Kyle, would you start us off? We'll start right in the middle of the table.
Last night, we attended, Corey and I, the Fremont County Rec Board twenty-five. And, interesting enough, two thousand and nineteen, we had requests for two hundred and six thousand dollars. We gave less than that away. Last night, we had a request for a hundred and sixty-five thousand. And, people are going to find out that when they come late, they're not going to be served very well. But, there was still, we set aside roughly about twenty-five thousand dollars for Riverton beautification. And, so, that, those funds primarily go for the youth and fast pitch, baseball, ice hockey. And, you know, when you spend money on the youth, it comes back to you. That's a, that's a, that's a no-brainer. But the, I guess the most important thing we discussed last night, and on my way home from work today, I drive up west Maine and east Maine and, and stop there at the stoplight and I see the, the lights on in the park on the skateboard. And I'm, I'll be darned if there's not a skateboarder in the middle of that skateboard going up and down. And so what they've done is they've gone in, shoveled all the snow off. They didn't, they didn't ask you, did they, Kyle, to come in and do that? They did it themselves and that's what they're doing. You know? So, anyway, they ask us, they asked the rec board for shovels and, I mean, you know, there was no way that we could turn them down. But, that type of cooperative investment is really powerful. That's all I have.
Thanks, Kyle. Thanks for doing that work. Corey?
Uh, Your Honor, just to piggyback a little bit on what Kyle said, one of the other things I thought that was pretty important that we discussed was, for lack of better words, a way to keep track of some of the items. And that's something that the rec board is considering. Sometimes when these grants are funded, the items can maybe disappear and they're not sure exactly where they are anymore. So they were maybe looking at some options.
Talking about the canoes.
Well, I don't know a whole bunch, but the story is, is there's some canoes out there that have disappeared that were paid for by the Fremont County School District Recreation Board. So that's kind of where the concern is drawn, that they purchased these canoes, now the canoes are gone. But...
Poison?
Yeah. So that was one thing we can discuss. And I did want to mention, as he said, the grants are for anybody that is affecting the youth that is in the Fremont County School District twenty-five jurisdiction. So if you're in that area, you are applicable for that grant. But as he said, if you didn't make last night's meeting, you're going to have to wait a little bit longer before you get to apply as, our hands are pretty full. Because I believe we had twenty, twenty-five groups maybe last night?
Had twenty-five groups and we received requests for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Mm-hmm. And then we did also give our Volunteer of the Year Award, which the recipient of that was Cameron Ferring, who was able to attend and receive that. The Community Engagement Committee was postponed. We'll have that tomorrow night, five-thirty, I believe. I think we're just going to be discussing the rendezvous games, but I'll leave that to Becca. On that end, that is all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Harla?
Not a lot to report, Your Honor. We did have a meeting for the Residential Treatment Center that we're trying to launch and that was on the twenty-third. I'll let Tim fill you in because I had to leave early due to other commitments. And that's about all I've got right now.
Councilman Hancock?
Yes, we did, the Residential Treatment Group, which I guess isn't really something that, it, it's, it's just a group that's kind of sprung out of solutions. We met and talked with Lloyd Larson and that was a really good opportunity to discuss with him some of his concerns. He's, I think, been very public in concerns about making sure that as a state, we're taking care of people that are suffering from mental illness. And I think had some good discussion with him, just about ways that a residential treatment center in Riverton could be funded. He expressed some hope that, you know, we could do better at using the space that we have, of course, in the old state training school. Of course, we've got changes coming there and that's exciting, but the, that was about what the discussion was centered around. We've been discussing the possibility of, of residential treatment at the Fremont County Detention Center, just starting discussions about that and hopeful that we can discuss that more with the county. Uena County actually has an interesting program where they have residential treatment at the, at the Uena County Detention Center.
At the jail?
Yes. And they have, they, they do all of that in-house. It is, it's in conjunction with the Drug Court program. So they already have people that are working with Drug Court that participate in that, the treatment providers, that is. And I think something like that may be able to work in Riverton. It's probably not a, Orlando, I guess, is the case would be, but in the county, it's probably not a short-term solution though, because right now with the jail at capacity, they don't really have a lot of room to do treatment groups. So that makes things a little bit difficult, at least in the short term, but hopefully we can get some discussion going in that area. We have a lot of people that are in the Fremont County Detention Center that are awaiting inpatient bed dates. Either they're charged with felonies or misdemeanors, they're sitting out their time, they've got a recommendation for inpatient treatment and the court does not want to release somebody, generally speaking, who has a recommendation for inpatient treatment untreated, just to go do whatever they want in the community. So, if, if it could, we're still trying to figure if logistically it can, if it could work to use the Fremont County Detention Center as a place where treatment can be received. It's a very exciting proposition and it's, it's being done elsewhere. So, they also have it working with their Drug Court, which we have the Drug Court program here as well. Our program only provides intensive outpatient treatment, however. So that's something that we've been discussing and, and still want to be trying to see if that's a possibility here, but maybe not short-term. I intend, I, I guess for anybody that was paying attention to the council appointments, I intend to continue on the Solutions Committee, whether as a representative from the city council or not. I did not request to be removed by, from that, if anybody was wondering about that. I spoke to Lance Godey, who serves as the president of that already, so I intend to still continue to work with the Solutions Committee. So, and look forward to working on the rec board. I think that'll be an exciting, I was there for a little bit before and any chance I have to spend with Corey Rota, it's a good.
Good time.
Sincerity there. Sincere. Very much.
Thank you. Councilman Bailey?
Force Committee did not meet during December and so I think they're working on the, again, upcoming bids for next season, so I'm looking forward to that. Again, I think we've done a great job spending our one cent tax monies improving the streets in, in Riverton. So, I did have the airport board meeting and of course, the, the big news there is that January twelfth, we will have SkyWest Airlines coming to Riverton, which should improve some of the services that we've been getting at our airport with bags, you know, bags being able to check all the way through and airline interface and all that kind of stuff. I did stop by the airport this morning and looks like the upgrades to the security area for, for the airport are either done or darned close to being done. They have that area secured. So the entire seating area where you used to be able to wait for the plane to come in is now in the secure area so that it can accommodate the bigger jets that are coming in with fifty passengers. And so, talked to some of those TSA guys that were up there and I think they're excited for their, for their new, new digs that, that we've got them and some, some more space and all that kind of stuff. So I, I'm excited to see the, the new things we've got coming to the airport, so it, it makes it nice. And, again, it was a, a very enjoyable holiday season around Riverton. I got to, to see a lot of different activities that were going on. You know, sometimes by the time you're done, we're tired of Christmas activities, but it, it's great. And Riverton was decorated very nicely this year and it's always great to see and lots of Christmas parties and fundraisers and all that kind of stuff. And so, it was, it was nice and it was an enjoyable time. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Councilwoman Schatz?
Yes, Your Honor. PAWS Board didn't have meetings for December, however, they did reach out to me to kind of let the public know that they are in dire need of board members. So the next meeting will be on the twenty-first of this month at the library at five-thirty. They're needing some people to help plan their next big fundraiser for Marty PAWS. All the fu, if you look at any group in Riverton nonprofit, PAWS really does so much fundraising. They work really, really hard for every single penny that they can get for those animals. So, if you have some time in your schedule to help, please show up to the meeting on the twenty-first at five-thirty at the library. Community Engagement Committee, like Corey said, we are meeting tomorrow to go over the rendezvous games, which will be held in the city park on February first. So if you have a group of people that want to do a team, you don't have a sponsor, let us know and we could find a sponsor for your team.